Chair Roche is not in attendance tonight, so I will be leading the meeting today. And Lisa is not able to attend the meeting today, so Danette is going to be leading us through our meeting this evening. So, Danette, can you please call the hall?
Director Weber?
Here.
W Felton?
Here.
Claphlin?
Here.
Lala Burdi?
Here.
T Felton?
Here.
And Human?
Here.
That's six present at six o'clock.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Kim, if you would rise?
We are excited to celebrate with the official swearing in of Kim Human as a member of the South St. Paul School Board. Following an open application period and interview process with three candidates, Kim was selected to fill the special, the special school board vacancy that was created by the sudden passing of Director Bernie Bierman. The Board officially approved Kim's appointment at their meeting on Monday, June 26th, and per Minnesota statute, appointees must wait 30 days prior to being sworn in and seated, which brings us to this evening. Kim will now serve this appointment until the completion of a special election on November 7th, 2023. The elected Board Member on November 7th will serve the remainder of Director Bierman's term that expires January of 2027. Kim, as a Bo- Kim, as Board Members, we serve as education key, as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our community schools to advance the vision of our district. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the Superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Kim Human, having signed the acceptance of, of, acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeat after me? I, Kim Human,
I, Kim Human,
swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of Minnesota,
swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Minnesota,
and that I will discharge faithfully the duties,
and that I will discharge faithfully the duties,
of the Office of School Board Member,
of the Office of School Board Member,
of South St. Paul's, South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six,
of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six,
to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations!
That was exciting. And next, we have the approval of meeting agenda and minutes. We have the school board, um, the school board meeting agenda for tonight, August 14th, 2023, and the Committee of the Whole and regular meeting minutes from Ja- July 24th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So, our quality in action tonight, we have CLC Assistant Principal, Robyn Schwab, and her team will highlight the 2023 Summer Learning Program.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino and the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity. And I'm representing the whole team here, so I didn't, I'm here by myself, but it ended up being a really heavy lift, and it ended up feeling a lot lighter with the crew that we had this year. So, without further ado, I just want to preface, when people think of the summertime in a, in a school district, it's, oh, all this relaxation and different things. And it really is what we call our Super Bowl for a lot of kiddos, that we get to do a lot of different things and connect with them in a different way than, and give them different learning opportunities and ways to connect to school that are outside the regular September to June. And so, that being said, I'll highlight some of the different programs that we had going on this year. Um, to start all of this, it starts in January, and it goes across all different departments. So, we have to loop in human resources and finance to make sure that we have the money to, to pay for all of this. We have food service, so all of our, our students get fed, and we have the opportunity to open it up to the community. Um, we have community education programs running. We had transportation offered through preschool all the way through eighth grade. And then, technology has supported all of our programs. Maintenance and grounds are, are scheduling different parts of the buildings that they're maintaining and different projects. Um, special services, making sure that we are coordinating with our, our partnership districts. And then, each of the site administrators that are leading their programs too. So, we start early, and then we really loop in, um, at the district level, the communications team to make sure that we're able to advertise all the opportunities that we have to get the, the most students, um, connected to our program. So, we've really grown in the last couple of years and streamlined how we're going to do this. And so, a lot of our programs have grown greatly in the last couple of years. So, overall, the programs that had, or the departments that had programs, and there's multiple programs underneath these, but Community Ed and Jean came last week and disca- or last meeting and discussed them with you. Early learning, the elementary buildings, middle school, high school, and special services. So, with community education, Jean has put together quite the, the slides, but she has programming for birth through seniors. And some of the things that are going around, um, that we're going to talk about tonight is the Kids' Choice Program, the Adult and Youth Enrichment, and some of the highlights from adult education. So, the Kids' Choice Program, that is located at Lincoln Center, and we have 105 students in grades K through six that we've been able to serve. And that way, um, it gives the students a chance to come, come to the buildings where they're familiar. They have access to the food service, um, and have programming with different access to different um, field trips and enrichment opportunities that are laced within that as well. And that's offered from 6:30 in the morning till 5:30 at night to work with the families in town as well, to give other options. The Youth Enrichment Gymnastics Program, that's highlighted here because we had 339 participants this summer that ranged from age 18 months all the way to 14 years old. And so, that was, um, located at Central Square, and there is a new pre-team that was added this year. And then, for the Adult Basic Education, um, it's, it's a great central location at Central Square where Jean can have all of the programming right there. And so, um, it was four weeks long, and there's a new GED testing center, so we provide more services, um, through the gamut, so they're not having to send people to different testing locations. So, that's, that's been a, a great addition. With early learning, um, Kristin Samartino Weeks has been coordinating that. And so, we had a program for our, our early learners, so it targeted, um, our Summer Blast, that is for preschool students, and it's the students that are going through kindergarten, are going into kindergarten that have little to no formal experience, whether it's a preschool or any of those other access, and really targeting the English language learners. So, we were able to really tune in and get those students in. So, we had 30 students that participated in that. Um, provides school-based social emo- mo- social emotional learning, early reading and STEM opportunities. And the biggest thing is getting them ready to go to school, and we, we will talk a little bit more about K-Camp after. Um, ECFE, we had 75 participants this year. So, we had families with the young children, getting them connected to programming to get them in our doors and just really connected to our school district and show the programming that we can just have right on the continuum of services. And so, it really did work with families to get the resources that they needed as well, and just to help them plan for their next steps as well. For Summer Learning Academy in our elementary, we revamped that a couple of years ago. When we were inviting students back into the building after COVID and shutting down, we was really needed to do something different. And so, with STEM being the focus that we really wanted to capture and get some energy around, we adopted what was called, um, Engineering is Elementary, the EIE kits. And so, what we did was we identified two units that every grade level would take, and so, they can continue to come back every year and not repeat the same curriculum. We also really hammer on the math and reading with RAS, the RAS Kids for Reading and for IXL for Math. But there's enough variety in it, so there's a lot of programming for the kids to have these enrichments. People were coming in, they went out, they like had fun. So, we, we did a lot of the exit surveys this year, and the positive feedback that we're getting just continues to grow each year. And so, I think what we're really going to do is identify the dates and, and send out some, save the dates really early this year, so families can plan around that, because that was one of the feedback that we got is, if we could start earlier, so families can put this stuff on the calendar, we can get even more students involved. Kindergarten Camp was the last program that we had running last week. Um, so, these were the incoming kindergartners. So, some of them are preschool blast graduates that were then starting to come in. So, that is actually at both buildings. Summer programming is, is we rotate between Lincoln and, and Capoja. So, K-Camp is when we open up both buildings again. So, they got to go to their home school that they're going to be going to, their neighborhood school. And, um, they were able to work with kindergarten staff, and they rotated between, so they got to see a little bit about what, what school would be like. So, that's a four-day program for those incoming students. For middle school, um, Leah Borg, she's our principal at that site. Um, we had a couple of variety pieces that are new this year. So, um, in addition to Packer Preview for our incoming sixth graders, we have Summer Learning, which has math, science, and individuals in society. We did the trip to Valley Fair again as a reward. Um, and the students, the attendance this year, I've been tracking that, and we were up to 93% overall attendance rate for summer school, which is huge.
That's great.
So, um, we're, we're always looking at not how many students are enrolling, but how many students are attending and retaining, and then also students that are coming back. And so, we had great attendance this year. Um, we had an intervention program for incoming sixth graders. They really, um, capped it at, at 20 students, and it was identified from the staff at the elementary schools and administrators based on testing data and, and, um, data points. And so, those students came in and they got, uh, intense reading intervention, intense math intervention. And then, we did an art, um, to weave into that as well, to help break up their day. And so, that was a new program that we started this year for the incoming sixth graders in addition to Packer Preview. And then, um, so our preview, we did have two different sessions this, this year. So, we did a session in June, session in July, and we, it was pretty even. Overall, we didn't know if it was going to be skewed one way or another, but, um, we offered it for two weeks, and it helped the students come into middle school, really get adapted to the building, figure out what the schedule would be like, and just get those jitters out of the way before they're coming in, and making sure that they have a positive interaction with all, all the students in the building first. All right, credit recovery, this is for grades 10 through 12, and that's for students that just finished ninth grade, so going into 10th grade. The high school program is, is all about credit recovery. So, students that are identified and having to enroll have, have to make up one of their credits that they, for some reason, did not get during that year, um, previously. So, starting with the counselors and the administration identifying what students needed to recover which credits. And then, we had meetings with each of the students and families and communicated what, where they were at as far as what they needed for graduation. And then, they were enrolled into our credit recovery program, which is five weeks. And they are, are enrolled into two courses. So, we had one session from 8:00 to 10:30 and one from 10:30 to 1:00. And so, if they only needed the one class, they could choose to stay in that one class that entire day. If they needed two, they could pre-test, and as soon as they were done with the course, standards, that they were able to master those, then they can enroll in a different class. So, with that being said, we had 269 credits that were earned. So, that's 30, I think 34 over last year. And we had more students attend on a consistent basis as well. So, a couple of big wins there. Um, and we're looking at other adaptive ways that we can continue to offer students what they need when they need it in a more timely fashion, so we don't have to recover as many. So, it, we've gotten good feedback as well, because in the past, if students had to miss a week because of family vacation, they might not be able to attend. And so, we went to a responsive model last year where students, every Monday, they can start new classes. And so, they could cycle through as many as, as they could, or if they needed a break or they had a vacation planned, we could communicate and we could stop and go with that. So, um, nothing's ever perfect, so we are constantly taking a look and always gathering feedback and adjusting. So, always a work in progress, but we've, we've been able to recover a lot of the credits using our software. We're able to, to make sure that we're giving the students exactly what they need. Extended School Year, this is offered, it's a couple-week program, it starts July 10th. And so, what we also, um, what's missing on here, we have early childhood, we have our elementary and secondary, but we also partner with 917, and we have Deaf Harder Hearing out of Lincoln Center as well. So, we coordinate with them as well to make sure that we have all the services in place, and we schedule all their playground time, and everyone's on a schedule, so we make sure that we're, we're really able to meet the needs of all the students there. Um, so, they've done a lot of exciting things through the ESY program this summer. And so, the students were having fun, and same thing, we got a lot of feedback that students were engaged, the attendance was great. And, um, we'll continue to look at IEP needs and see what other programming. And another part that is not on there is, we did a reading intervention with students that do have an IEP. And so, we really did an intense reading intervention for the students at the high school level. And so, that was a pilot program that we tried for this year. So, that's a really fast overview of a bunch of different programs, but just know there's pockets of programs that run throughout the summer to hopefully meet the needs of all the students. And there's other programs that run consistently to help with that continuity for families as well.
Fantastic. Are there any questions? Comments? Just, it's a, it's an ongoing machine, it just keeps going, doesn't matter the time. It's able to, so thank you so much for all of your work, um, this summer. I know we all appreciate, I know summertime people think is a time to just chill out and relax, but we can show that they're, the learning never stops.
I think it speaks to the dedication of our staff and students who stay engaged and make that commitment. And it's a lot of fun. I always enjoyed, you know, teaching summer programs or running them, but, uh, kudos to Robyn and others for, I mean, that's a lot there, and those credits earned. It's a lot of kids getting back on track as they come into the year, so.
That's great.
Very positive.
Yes. Fantastic.
Yes, nice to hear about the good attendance. That's good to know, really good to know.
Well, thanks. It was a lot of engaging material, so the kids were coming back, and it was a lot of communication and being really upfront and making our plans, because most of the students, most of the programs need a continued learning plan if it's an alternative program, where there's a, there's a plan for each student for personalized learning. And so, that's, that's communicated prior to program starting. And then, there's checkpoints throughout the programs to give progress notes, and then afterwards. So, for example, Packer Preview, when the students leave, their parents are saying, well, are they ready for sixth grade? They'll have notes that said, did awesome, were very social, knew the building, need to work on their combination lock, or, you know, they're having a hard time in the lunchroom, but let's work on this, this, and this, or there's some other days coming up that we can have an open building and do this. So, it's, it's grown, and we'll keep adjusting, so.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda, so we did have, um, public listening sessions today. Public listening sessions happen the first meeting, um, of the month. Um, we start at 4:15. Um, and so, we had a, several individuals, where all, um, parents in the district come and share their feedback with us today. Um, we discussed, um, the bullying policy, we discussed, um, bathroom topics in the high school, which I hear are quite the hot item when you talk to students. Um, we talked about, um, just kind of like, how do we make our, our district valuable as an employer? And how do we make sure that the employees are getting what they need, and the families are getting what they need? Um, and it was overall a, a very good discussion, um, about lots of different topics. Um, again, that's not the only time you can give us feedback. Um, all of our email addresses for the Board are listed on the district website, along with our phone numbers, along with, there's a form on the website that you can also fill out that then goes to, um, our Board Administrator, who then can distribute them, um, to the Board. So, there's lots of different ways to get involved and to have your voice, your voice heard. I have been stopped walking my dog to get feedback more than one time. Um, and so, my, my neighbors all know who I am and that I'm on the Board, so, um, once again, we appreciate all the feedback that we get from the community. And then, next up is also me, so we had the Committee of the Whole meeting, um, which is our work session meeting before, um, our regular Board meeting. And so, today, we talked about, um, insurance rates. I always love to have a good conversation about, about health insurance rates. And then, we talked about our various committee work, um, that we're involved in. All tangent to the district. And those are pretty much the only Committee of the Whole updates. So, next, Superintendent Zambrino will provide highlights from around the district.
All right, well, thank you Acting Chair Weber, that's got a good ring to it. Appreciate you, uh, stepping into that role tonight. We are at a very busy time of year, as we're gearing up for the new year. And of course, our, our staff and our teachers are still on break, but everyone's kind of feverishly, uh, getting ready for the return of our students. One of the most important things for us is communication. I still am waiting for someone to put in our survey, you communicate too well. So, we're gonna, we're gonna strive for that, the comment in our survey data, but we are very committed to, to providing good communication. And, uh, obviously, in this modern world, a lot of that is digital. And so, I want to make sure people know that we have some tools to help us communicate with you. So, uh, first, sometimes you'll hear something called an SIS, we love acronyms in our line of work. That's our Student Information System. And we use Infinite Campus. And so, uh, we are wanting to make sure that our families log into the parent portal to verify and update contact information. So, you can find the link to, um, Infinite Campus on our website, but want to make sure that people know that's where we, uh, pull information. So, like our Parents' Square Communication, our grade updates, information related to Win Wednesday, all those kinds of information pulls really come straight from Infinite Campus. So, ask people to log in, make sure we've got the right address, the right email address, phone numbers, all those, uh, contact pieces, which then segues right into my, uh, next topic, which is Parents' Square. So, last year, we brought on Parents' Square, which is our main communication tool. It's a very powerful tool, and may, it does some neat things where, um, like if families go in and choose a language different from English, our staff can type a message to them in English, and it'll translate for them so that they get it in their preferred language. Uh, but that does pull information straight out of that Infinite Campus, so we need people to get into that parent portal. Uh, on August 24th, all new families or staff, as well as anyone who has not verified their account yet this year, you're going to receive an email invitation. So, when you get that, please, uh, verify your information is correct in Parents' Square, so you can activate your, uh, account. And if you did this last year and have been, uh, receiving communications, there's nothing you need to do. So, don't need to worry about it if you've been having that. But if you are having trouble by the end of the day on the 25th, please reach out to your student's school, and we'll get you some support. Uh, more information on Parents' Square can be found on our website under the Communications Department. So, again, just need both of those, uh, verified, Infinite Campus and Parents' Square. And then, we've talked about this before, but we have had some changes at the state that we're excited about, that we now have universal, uh, free lunch for all of our students. Uh, and so, sometimes people think of the application for educational benefits really being about lunches, and that, um, it's, it's always been more than that. But as we go into this year, uh, obviously, we don't need to worry about that for the lunch, but want to make sure people do that. We still do get funding based on those counts in the, and the application for educational benefits, but you also can get, uh, discounts and assistance on things like internet and phone, uh, energy and other, other pieces. I know I logged into my Xfinity account, and it popped up to say you might qualify for, uh, reduced rates. So, want to make sure our families know that. Uh, if you need more information, you can go on our website, click on Departments, and go into Nutrition to find out more. And then, we also know that this time of year, people are looking for information on, you know, school supplies, handbooks, like what do I need to know? And we always, again, try to keep things, uh, as easy as possible. So, we do have, on our, our main webpage, there's a tab that says Resources. And if you click there, you'll see a subset called School Year, so you can find, uh, information on our, our school supplies, handbooks, calendars, anything you need to know about transfer, uh, transportation, which we talked about last time, needing people to, to sign up for transportation. So, please, if you're looking for information, that's a good one-stop shop to click on and find out more information. All right, always a lot going around, uh, going on around the district. And excited to, to talk about something that I think we sometimes forget. We, um, I love the work we do with our pre-K through 12, but I, I love the fact that, uh, and it came up in our public listening session, this is a special school district, so it's a one school district and one community. And so, it's important in any community, but I think it, uh, speaks even more to that importance of our community education. We are really striving to provide a quality educational experience for everybody from birth through, uh, senior adulthood. And so, uh, you should have received your communicate, or your Community Education Program catalog last week. So, uh, if you haven't gotten that, you can certainly hop on the website at communityed, uh, at sspps.org and access that. But lots going on. So, we have early learning programming happening. So, we have our earliest learners, we start them right again, right from birth. So, there's information about early childhood family education and, or what we often call ECFE. Again, we love our acronyms, uh, it's a lot mouthful otherwise, but the ECFE includes, uh, Learning Time for Families Together, which is a neat thing. And I, um, often hear people say, you know, something I learned in ECFE that still applies with my teenager now. So, there's like a lot that families learn at that point, but especially when it's your first child. I remember what that was like, I'm not sure I know what I'm doing. So, uh, a great place, and, and classes range from like one-day drop-in, uh, just to play, to, uh, four-week short sessions, and even 15-week courses to fit your schedule. Uh, all baby classes and drop-in plays are free, so it's also something you can access without cost. Uh, we also run youth enrichment, so lots going on. We heard about the gymnastics program a couple of times, and we heard it tonight, and recently, really a lot of participation there, but lots going on, arts and crafts, athletics such as basketball, football, CPR training, um, driver's education. So, lot, lots and lots, there's open lap swim for kids. So, please, if you haven't accessed the youth enrichment, uh, opportunities, please do, there's lots there. Again, you can find everything linked on our website. And we would be remiss if we didn't talk about adult enrichment. And so, um, we have Community Ed running, uh, dance classes, fitness programs at Central Square. I always enjoy walking by the dance studio and seeing people in there, uh, doing all different kinds of exercise. The, the catalog that was sent out highlights different workout programs and classes. Uh, again, adult lap swim as well, so that pool's open for youth and adults. Uh, and again, on top of, uh, fitness and swimming, there are classes around mindfulness, health and wellness, uh, CPR, culinary classes, and financial literacy. So, lots going on. And then, for our seniors, we have an amazing program at our Senior Center. And I was actually at the fashion show, super fun picture there of the fashion show, and that's actually a family friend of my mom, so fun to see that. Um, but the Senior Center features activities and social events to anyone ages 55 and up. Daily and weekly socials, like card games, line dancing, lots of crafting going on. Each month, there's, uh, a different social lunch that takes place. So, I always try to pop by, and, and it's just a hoot, uh, our seniors are really fun and really funny when I, when I stop in there. Uh, and they also do guided trips and tours, so I know recently they were up in Duluth. So, lots of cool opportunities, I heard. I know there's a couple of connections right on the Board to that Duluth trip. One Board Member and one Board Member's mom who were on that trip at least. So, uh, please take advantage of the great things going on in our, at our Senior Center. And then, uh, the Community Education Fall Program catalog, as mentioned earlier, delivered to mailboxes. If you do not live in South St. Paul, or you did not receive it, again, you can go to the Central Square and pick it up, or hop on our website. Heard a little bit about our kindergartners, so kindergarten camp, the students were just there at Lincoln and Capoja, learning about, uh, school and getting geared up for coming back here after Labor Day. We know that it's a big transition, I think, but super fun. I remember the energy and excitement those kinders have when they finally get to go to school. So, looking forward to welcoming them. And then, we recently participated in Nights Unite, so there's our contingent from the district. I really love opportunities like this, because, you know, a lot of times for those of us, we drive the same route through town, and just walking, uh, around and getting into different streets I don't normally drive on. And actually, one of my favorite things is when they have, uh, the gatherings in the alleys. Because when you're in the alleys, you kind of really see how people live. You see, you know, I talked to one gentleman about his smoker that his neighbor tried selling him multiple times, and finally said, fine, just keep it. So, now, they're over there, you know, smoking meats and the pools that are- So now they're over there, you know, smoking meats, and the pools that are tucked away in people's backyards. You really learn who people are, and I know that our staff and board just love getting out, so thanks to everyone who participated in Night to Unite. And this is probably a lot of information, what I will say at the outset, all of this information on back-to-school events will come to you from your school site, but the secondary has a couple of dates, August seventeenth and twenty-first for drop-in, back-to-school days between twelve and three, and four to seven on those two dates, and it's an opportunity to come in and get the school photo, so I always want to make sure people hear that. So parents, if you're bringing your child in, make sure they know that they have to wear that cool shirt that they've been waiting all summer to have in that school picture, get that haircut done before they come in for that. There will be some of our departments available to answer questions around nutrition, technology, et cetera. And then we have the Family Connection events coming up. So again, those will be communicated directly, because that's that opportunity to connect more one-on-one with the teachers. Early learning in elementary, of course, also have opportunities, so August thirty-first is the Elementary Family Connection Day, and then September fifth and sixth is for kindergarten, they start a little bit later, as well as our preschool, so you can see those. Again, all that information will come straight from the site, so please be looking for information in your inbox or in your mailbox from your schools. First days of school, kind of a rolling start. So on September fifth, excuse me, which is the day after Labor Day, we'll jump in with the first day for grades first through fifth, sixth, ninth, and anyone new to S S P P S, so those kind of elementary and the transitions at middle, high, and then anyone new, we want to get you in and get you settled in and make sure your needs are met. And then September sixth is the first day for grades seven and eight, and then ten through twelve. Again, with that rolling start, our kindergarten and preschool start a little bit after, so September seventh and eleventh for kindergarten and preschool respectively, and then that E C F E I mentioned, Early Childhood Family Education classes start on September twenty-fifth. I know we've talked a lot about people being engaged with our board and our interest of our board being engaged with the community. There's always materials available online on our website. You can find videos of past meetings, any of our agendas, all that information is posted there. And then we work hard to put everything out on social media, so for those who prefer social media as a way to stay connected, hop on any of your favorite apps and find us out there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Moving on to our consent items, our consent items are items that have to go through the board, including bills payable, staffing appointments, resignations, transfers, retirements, adjournments, and leaves. I am looking for a motion for our consent items.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There is no policy review tonight, but I know that this September, our policy machine is going to get back up and running, and so look for future policy items there. So our next business item is for approval for the South St. Paul Board to approve the twenty-twenty-four health, dental, and ancillary insurance premium rates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And now I will turn it over to our Director of Human Resources.
Great, thank you very much. So before you add the proposed twenty-twenty-four health and dental and other insurance rates, in two thousand seventeen, we moved to a self-insured plan for dental insurance, and in two thousand eighteen for health insurance, with rates determined annually by the district. A key component of our self-insured plan is to build and maintain an adequate reserve to ensure funds are available to offset fluctuating costs. Based on analysis of claims history, expected future claims, and the need to continue to maintain our reserve amount for payment of claims, administration recommends no change in rates and approval of the twenty-twenty-four health and dental insurance rates presented. Additionally, additional information regarding the recommendation is listed below. We have reached our reserve fund goal, and the chart below illustrates health and dental rates since moving to self-insured plans. The proposed twenty-twenty-four dental and other ancillary insurance rates are attached. The recommendation for the twenty-twenty-four health and dental insurance rates were shared with the district's Insurance Committee as well, and tonight, we're seeking your approval for that zero percent increase for the twenty-twenty-four rates.
Any questions?
I'm going to just jump in if I may. I mean, I think this is a really a great thing we're able to do for our employees. So the self-funded insurance, like Joel said, it's an engaged committee that involves representation from our different bargaining units, but it is amazing that we don't have to raise rates, and we know for a lot of families what a big expense health insurance is, and of course, how important it is, and the health of our staff is super important to us. So this is really neat, and we've talked before about retention and wanting to keep people who are working in the district or attract people who are interested in the career, and this is just a great tool for us to be able to do that. So exciting for our current employees that they don't have to take on an extra expense, and great that we can offer that as a perk when people are looking at us. I know we talk sometimes about total compensation, and sometimes people just want to know what the salary amount is, but this is, a lot of times, that health insurance chips away at that salary, and so this is a great benefit for our staff.
Absolutely. And thank you so much for all the work you've done on the committee and soliciting bids and going out to do all the numbers. I think it's a great benefit for all the people who work in our district. So any further discussion? Any? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moving on to our last item on the agenda is Board Member Reports, Committee Updates, and Where Have You Seen a Passion? And I thank Kim for your first meeting. What do you want to, we'll kick us off here.
Well, I'll start with committee updates. I'm looking forward to joining the Community Education Committee. So that's something exciting I have a passion for. My mom was on the Duluth trip, so. And what I've seen passion in our community for, since it's been publicly announced by the school district that I was filling this position, I've had so many people stop and reach out to me, and I just think it was so cool that so many people are paying attention to district news. So I just want to say thank you to the people of South St. Paul for paying attention, and keep up.
So we'll just go down the line.
Okay.
I have an exciting thing that's going to be coming up this fall. As you know, I am the South St. Paul representative to Intermediate District nine seventeen, which's main office is located in Rosemont at Dakota County Technical College. Coming up this November, after Thanksgiving, I will be attending the A E S A Annual Conference with several ISD nine seventeen other board members, which is a national conference, the Association Education Service Agency, which will be held this year in Anaheim, California. I have attended this conference three other times, once in San Antonio, Colorado Springs, and in Phoenix. It is an excellent program, looking forward to this conference at the end of November. And also, I am a member of the South St. Paul Senior Center, I serve on that Board of Directors also, and for those of you that have been attending events there, kind of put it on your calendar, the coming up on the first Wednesday in October, that will be our next, it will be our fall fashion show, and the cost for that is twenty dollars, because that's what pays for our catered lunch, which is always an excellent day. Of course, I am a model in that fashion show, so it is a really fun event, because we had almost a record amount attending at the last fashion show, so it was great. So you have to sign up at Central Square. And I also was on the Duluth boat trip last week with Central Square, and it was a great event. So if anyone enjoys to be out there on social events, be sure that you check in the catalog that was just sent out that Dr. Zambrino had discussed earlier. There are a lot of events listed on that, so we look forward to that, so thank you. And I want to give out a personal thank you and congratulations to Kim for being on our board. We welcome you, and I know you'll do a great job, so thank you. It's nice knowing you.
Judge Cleveland? I had the pleasure of being at a golf tournament over the weekend that supported one of our endowed scholarships here, and it's for the South St. Paul Education Foundation. It was the Craig Felton Memorial Scholarship that receives all the monies from the tournament, and there was quite a bit of staff from South St. Paul golfing, which was appreciated, and some family members of board members were there, so that was wonderful. And just wanted to thank everybody for their support, and the money goes to a great cause, his scholarship, and it was a wonderful day.
Fantastic. Judge Cleveland?
The Local Issues Committee will be meeting on August twenty-third. We did not meet in July, and that is at eight o'clock at Central Square. I'm just so excited about the start of the school year, and glad to see that our students are also really excited about it. In our neighborhood, all the kids are talking about who they have for their teachers, and the older students are giving their bits of advice. So the buzz from the students is just so fun to see. I'm glad that our students are excited about coming back to school and looking forward to this. And I'm also looking forward to welcoming the new teachers on the twenty-first, and some of the opening day's activities at the school district on the twenty-eighth, being able to participate in welcoming the new teachers, everyone back into the buildings. That will be a lot of fun, a lot of really positive energy to start off a new year.
I have nothing tonight.
I, once again, would just like to congratulate Director Human on her official swearing-in. That has to be the highlight of my day, so we'll, and I am also just looking forward to the start of school and the start of activities, and football games, and volleyball matches, and The Wizard of Oz is going to be the fall musical, so lots of exciting things to look forward to this year. So if nothing further, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and the meeting is adjourned at six forty-two P M. Thank you very much, everybody.